I'd like to call the order of the committee, the whole, for August 10th, 2021, at 5:16 PM. Done the pledge, roll call.
Alder Persons Madden.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Capusta is absent. Aaron's.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
And Wolf.
Here.
And Mayor Pitfalski.
Present.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. The, just kind of give you an order of things tonight. We've got lots going on and we're going to be bouncing around unfortunately because we have some set times for a couple of the other meetings. So we're going to run this one until 5:15. Then we're going to run, sorry, I'm, 5:45, I'm sorry, until 5:45. And then we're going to bounce over to the Big Lake meeting, which should last about 15 minutes. Then we're going to start the common council meeting, do the public discussion part, in case there's people here to talk about the rezoning. Let them get their conversation out of the way. Then we're going to bounce back to the committee, the whole, and finish up anything we have there, and then return back to the common council meeting. So pay attention. We're going to be bouncing around. If you have questions, let me know. But we're trying to do this in the best interest of the public and our staff that are here, so. That being said, new business, 2022 capital projects, fund budgets, public works and development divisions. You should all have a copy of the five-year plan, uh, five-year proposed capital budget in front of you. They should be able to follow along with.
Good evening. So we're going to start with parks. That'd be on your last page, 67. While we get there, just to kind of give you an idea, um, one of the things that I want to bring up, we are in the process of doing the five-year parks and open space plan. So again, while we're doing this, and even though we do a five-year plan, be prepared that after we finish that plan, that's going to drive some of the changes that we have for the next coming five years. And some of the other things I want to mention, just instead of looking right at 2022, big things that are coming up, like in 2023, Veterans, that's a big playground, $325,000. That's right out there. Um, if anyone's looking or any groups reaches out looking for different things of how to raise funds and work for the city, kind of like Alley, this would be a great opportunity for them. Uh, moving on, like 2024, we see Moreland Park, great park, but the idea of a pavilion there would probably be essential. And then in 2025, looking at Sand Hill. And why we kind of see some of these things is Sand Hill Park, you got, the only park really down in that area, Mallard Ridge has 45 lots that are going just to the north of it. Meskego Lakes Estates just has six lots left. The next five years, some of the development is going to drive where we put things in parks. So what, that is the whole thing for the five-year plan. Um, we're going to kind of go through just the 2022 stuff, and I kind of break it down. Um, we'll just basically start with all the field stuff, just to kind of give you guys an overview, and then we can comment on that, and we can slowly move down, if that's okay. We've done this in the past, similar. Does that sound agreeable to everyone?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. So when we look at the field stuff, all that field stuff that we do for the first portion of it, for 7,000, 3,000, 4,500, 4,000, and again, it's not a typo, that the Bloom is 17,500. We have to do some extra work on Field One, is that correct, with drainage just for the one year? And then we're back, just going to back down to 7,500, the 2,500, the 5,000, 5,000. That is for us as a city to get those fields in ready play, safety, so that then we turn them over to all the organizations to use them. So it's nothing more, and you can see that cost is kind of like traditional that we've done for every year. There's nothing more additional, Jeff, except for Bloom. Again, Bloom Fields is the first one is, we have to add an extra $10,000 to fix the drainage in Field One, and that's it. Any comments or questions on those first couple?
Looks good.
Well, these are all bump ups from last year.
Yeah, that's it. Except for the extra $10,000 for the Bloom.
I think I asked this before. Um, Bloom, we're looking at some of the fencing along those ball fields. It's kind of like starting to fall out. Is that in those numbers?
No, we just, this is just the maintenance of the field.
That's probably something, I think one of them, I don't know the number, probably in the next year or two, if you look at, um, the fencing, Southeast Field, yeah. Um, the, um, the concrete is exposed in a number of spots to the point where it's half in, half out, so.
It's part of the drainage problem, it's pushing the footings out.
Okay. Yep, got it.
We're tackled to go first and fence later.
Got it.
So just for clarification for everyone, you're talking fencing, you're talking about the backstops, correct?
Yeah, the backstops and the fence around the dugouts and all that and stuff. And that's Field One. I take my notes right now. It helps me to just remember, so.
Are your increases from last year materials costs?
Some material cost. Um, there's also, I have a little concern that one of the groups that have done this work consistently for the last couple of years is no longer going to bid on this work, and so I feel like we're going to have some higher cost, so.
Any further questions on this part? Continue.
Okay. Um, moving down, the next one that we have here, we have the Parks, uh, tennis court, pickleball court that's at Lions, outdoor seating with some shade. Again, our pickleball, um, is well attended. We have a lot of people that are using it. We did another pass tournament this weekend. Um, one of the things that we are looking at is just putting some shade and some more outdoor seating there. It's one of the requests that the group has asked from us, so we finally got it into, uh, capital. I believe it was in there last year. We just are moving it up to this year, so.
It was in there for 10 last year.
It probably was, and we just added more, so.
Double plus? And then Kerth was in there last year, too.
Which one?
Kerth.
For, we, we probably pulled it.
Okay. But double plus? Scott?
We can, if you want to reduce it, I'll just provide seating.
For the, for a number that, you know.
So.
Yeah, I was going to say, why don't you explain how you got to the two numbers?
So the rationale for the increase is we have to build a retaining wall for the seating area to help with the water that's coming on the court as well. So it's a retaining wall, concrete, seating, some shade structures, because there is no shade over there. The one big shade tree had to be cut down because of Emerald Ash Bor. So it went up and cost, one, concrete's up, but two, we're actually expanding it a little bit. We have 172 people enrolled in the current session, and so when they're all there, it's like a few trees of shade lines where they're all kind of lining up their chairs, so just trying to accommodate their request.
Other comments? Moving on to the next one, it's just dumpster enclosures, uh, basic stuff. Idle Isle needs two of them, Park Arthur, Bloom, and then Old Town Hall, so.
Is that just a rebuild on Town Hall?
Yes, just a rebuild.
That seems high for, enclosures, 5,000 apiece, isn't it? Or, I don't, I'm sorry?
Comes with concrete bases, everything that we, it's a whole price. It's everything included to put in.
Because I know building materials have skyrocketed tremendously this year. Has that taken, that into consideration as well?
We, we plan accordingly for everything.
So when you say that, Scott, are you getting actual quotes at this point, and that's your estimates? How are you coming up with the numbers, I think?
We, we get quotes from all these things, and then we throw a little fluffer on just to make sure that we're not caught off guard, so. And just because we have it, because if the prices get too extreme, we won't do it.
They either do it, or if the numbers come in lower, they don't spend to the dollar amount that they had either, so. We just want to make sure that we're budgeting enough that it can get done if it needs to get done.
Well, it's still up from last year. It just seemed like a high amount to me. I was just kind of surprised by that, I guess.
Concrete work.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
So does a contractor supply this, and you're anticipating what they're going to charge you, or are we supplying the, the materials and letting the contractor do it?
It's contractor coming in, removing existing. Um, if the removal of the existing puts us over budget, DPW would take on those, um, duties. It's removing, pouring new concrete, putting up composite all the way around, and some gates that lock to kind of help with our citizen issue of dumping in our dumpsters and filling them.
That's our variable, then?
What's that?
That's our variable, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Continue.
Going down, uh, the next ones that we have is miscellaneous playground replacement equipment. That's our standard, $5,000 a year. Wood chips for all playgrounds is 10,000, and then we're doing concrete aprons around Bloom, Jensen, Lions, and D'Nune this year, uh, for a total of 55,000. And then I believe that would be all the parks, that all our playground sets all have a concrete apron around it for controlling the mulch and making it nice and clean.
Questions, comments? Continue. Fencing?
Moving on, next one is the Park Arthur. It's probably our biggest kind of cost that we have this year is doing some split rail fence around it. Um, again, the fields are being redone, so this is kind of the last little addition that we wanted to kind of put around there to kind of separate the area.
Where exactly is this going?
Uh, it's going to take place, it's pretty much going to box in our parking lots, so people can just pull straight off and pull on the fields. The north parking lot, um, running north to south, if you want to say, facing east, and same, um, in the south parking lot, along with access gates for all of our paths. So right now, people are pulling out there and using a pass that are paved two and a half inches thick as roads. So they'll kind of contain people and protect the investment we're doing right now.
That was moved from 2025?
No, that was, um, always set for 2022. Or did we move it up? We might have moved it up to just to kind of balance everything out. Looking at about 319,000 to 350 each year, kind of spaced it all out to evenly the cost.
Okay, because last year showed that was going to be in 2025.
Yeah, we probably moved it up.
It was moved up.
Okay.
Yeah.
And mainly because of the investment we're making out there right now with the new fields, which, if anyone is interested, if you drive by, they are coming along pretty good.
Nobody said it was going to be easy, just so you know.
I didn't expect it to be.
All right, moving on.
Um, we'll just kind of group the bathrooms, um, all those bathroom stalls. So basically, uh, we're looking for the kind of like polymer or plastics inside. So right now, we have metal that we paint every year. Um, all the bathrooms, most of them got a new epoxy floor, and they got new LED lighting last year. We were able to do it. Um, so this is just to upgrade kind of the, all the bathroom stalls. And that would be, it looks like almost Kerth, Bloom, Idle Isle, Veterans, Lions, Park Arthur, Old Town Hall, so.
Questions, comments? All right, continue.
Um, the next two, first one will go with the Moreland Park Skate Park. So that Skate Park, uh, this is 18,500. Um, we've had a couple repairs last year. We just need to basically resurface it. It's, we're in tariffs, get a lot of use. Um, but we had to track down the material, and it'll cost that much to basically, from my understanding, just to resurface the entire thing, so. The next one, too, replace the parking stations at Idle Isle. I know we just got them. The thing is, we probably spent probably more money fixing them. Um, Tammy can attest that, than probably what, uh, we paid for them originally. So they're kind of been, um, not functioning well for us, and we need to replace them in order to keep using them. We'll try to salvage the other ones. Again, maybe they'll, we'll have a company buy them back from us. Anything, we'll look into it, but we're at the point where we probably call a maintenance guy out almost every other week on them.
So you're going with a different brand, different make? What are you doing?
Different brand, different make. We haven't even started investigating them. We just kind of look at the price, but there's at least two or three that we've looked at.
Aren't those only about two or three years old?
Yes.
We ordered them in 2017. There was a delay in shipping. We didn't receive them until 2018. Um, and were installed at that point. We're at the point now where, um, I think our biggest problem is we don't, they're not hardwired. They're mobile modems, and we're shooting that signal across the lake. So they're not working. So we had multiple days where they were down, and they completely shut down. We get no notification that they're down. So people are trying to use their card. It's not going through. They're not getting a receipt. They're parking. So the police are having to deal with a lot of people asking for their citations to be removed, and we have no, the machine doesn't communicate at all. So we lost out in one weekend, $1,800. It's gone, because the cards were put in, but nothing connected cellularly. So this includes like hardwiring phone lines and electric to those machines, so we're not relying on going across a big lake to get those two options. And then also to be able to sell season passes directly from them. That is a big request, because not everybody can make it here during the daytime. So then they would be able to print out a sticker that would actually go on their window.
How much do we, did we originally spend on it?
Uh, they were nine, the units were $9,000 apiece for the unit, the install, the concrete, all of that.
How many, how many units?
Two.
Two units?
Is there any kind of warranty or anything with them, or what was?
No. Well, there was a warranty that's expired.
How long is the warranty?
It was a one year. And the big problem is the company that we bought them from is in Paris.
Paris?
Paris. So we bought them from a local vendor, Tapco, but the manufacturing plant's in Paris. They chose 4th of July, which is not 4th of July for them, to do a major service update. So it shut us down for three days entirely over the 4th of July weekend. So, um, their communication is horrible. Their parts are expensive. It's $100 for a tape roll for the receipts to be printed out, where other vendors are $35 or $40. Our service calls are roughly $300 apiece. So we've already spent $5,000 on service calls this year.
So what did Tapco have to say about this?
They're not very happy about the communications with us, because it's a lot of them, but.
They're the distributor, right?
Yeah, but it's the same problem. They have multiple of these machines that are their responsibility, and it's happening to everybody. So it's not so much Tapco, it's the manufacturer, Parkion, that they're having the problems with.
We, we took their recommendation to buy them, though, right?
Yes.
Should be responsible for something.
So what kind of figure did we generate after we put those machines in, and how much increase or decrease from what we were doing before?
The first, the first year, it was pretty much the same as having people sitting at the gate, collecting the money when they were there, which was just Saturday and Sundays. We didn't have anybody there during the week. Um, now that they're up, last year was a record year, was close to $45,000 between launching and parking, but that was because of COVID, and everybody was coming to the lake. This year, we're, I just did the numbers today, uh, we're close to 19, almost $20,000 this year, which is average for where we are in the year. But we don't have any staff there at all, so there's not, other than the repairs, there's not the cost of having somebody sitting there 12 hours a day collecting money from people.
And are we getting anything in the neighborhood boxes, the neighborhood landings?
Yep. And we actually, we normally sell between 300 and 350 season passes. We're at 600 right now, and almost all residents. So everybody bought boats last year for some reason, so we've sold a lot of season passes. But we have been collecting money on the road ends, on, um, Little Meskego and Big Meskego's been pretty busy, and D'Nune has people sitting there in the weekend, so that has been full as well.
Thank you. Any more questions on the pay stations? Comments? All right. Continue.
That'd be it for Parks. Any other comments before we switch to over?
So I wasn't here last year when you went through this, and obviously, last year is my first year. So what do you typically do on this? We discuss each topic? Do you?
Do a consensus.
Do a consensus on the, on the whole, by department?
By, yeah.
Yeah, I would like, for, for example, I think Parks, you guys could do it all at once. Um, when we do the, the other equipment, um, one by one, or a couple of things, like engineering, there's one item on it. There's nothing really many, major going on. So whatever you guys feel comfortable with. Um, for the Parks, I'd like you to, if there's anything you would like to pull, let me know. If not, a consensus on that would be great. And then as we go forward, um, we can do it by department if you want, and I can break it down. It's pretty easy for me.
Just to note that these are landfill funds.
Consensus to move forward with these?
Sure.
All right. What's the next part you're going to tackle?
Okay. Thanks, Tammy.
Pages 37 to 43?
34, page 34, please.
The van?
Yep. So this is our building maintenance van. This is the one that George uses. Um, we're requesting to replace that, that van. Um, it's, it's at its life. We take care of it. We look at the oil, um, the tires. I believe, what, how many miles does it have? About 75, 90,000? Just shy of 80,000 miles on the, on the vehicle right now. But it's starting to hit some major kind of issues that we'd have to really do some replacement. So we're looking to, uh, replace the vehicle for this year, or coming up in 2022. What, what year was the vehicle, did you say?
Uh, that one I don't know offhand.
We would know that offhand, but it's just shy of 80,000 miles. How many miles you put out, typical year?
From the library?
Around the, uh, I'm guessing maybe 5,000. So it's, so it's getting pretty old.
We can get the year back to you if you want.
It's not, not a big deal. I just, did we have this planned out? No, this is one that just kind of came up where we started seeing it, and we started checking, when we check our maintenance on it, and we're like, it's coming up quickly. Once we check, Chuck, one of our mechanics, started seeing like, hey, it's leaking more oil, the, this issue, this issue, this issue, we threw it up on there for capital for this year.
These are hard miles. They're very short trips.
Oh, short trip.
A lot of them, yeah.
And we got to take into consideration the drivers, too, right?
What, what kind of? Kind of mileage do we get on our other DPW vehicles?
How many, how many miles do we get out of them a mileage?
Uh, we run them until I can legally sell them or bid them out. But for what George, for what George does, it's a little bit.
I understand. And, and we'll sell the vehicle as well. We'll put it up for people to bid on it, so.
Question, so, right now, there's a vehicle shortage of new vehicles. You go drive past any dealership, there's hardly anything in the lots anymore. I guess my question is, is it next year a good time to buy one and maybe wait? Because I, you know, I think you're going to be paying a premium for something.
Well, first, and I don't want to speak for Ryan, we might not even be able to get this.
Right.
I just, I'm just telling you, like, we put it in, like, this is not until 2022. But a couple of our vehicles right now that we've ordered last year, they're, they're.
Chips.
They're not coming.
Yeah, we, we just got the one for planning that, like, three weeks ago. Yeah, so.
But I, all these other work vehicles, and maybe Ryan can.
Yeah, so 2019, with our one-ton vehicles, that was when COVID started. We carried that one over to 20. I had another one coming. Looks like we're going to be carrying that one over, because they stopped production again. There was COVID. There was a strike. Then there was COVID. And now what they did was, because everybody's buying new vehicles, they took the commercial vehicles, put them off to the side, put the, if you want to call it residential, but everyday drivers back into production. As you could said, they're just clearing lots out right away. So with George's van, I talked to who usually go through, we'll take that in consideration, not that, um, I mean, it's pretty much a basic economy van with no windows that you can slide a sheet of plywood in. It's nothing custom ordered, um, which should be more available, but at the same time, those vehicles are going out when the Amazon trucks are buying 200 at a crack, or UPS, FedEx, whoever. So we'll take that in consideration. It's just, it needs to get in there, because what we're going through right now with his van is the major bannade fixes are turned into, or the minor bannade fixes are turned into major. So we'll be sticking thousands into a van that, where we could just be replacing it.
Is this affecting the buying group from the government? Have you guys, are you buying on contracts or no?
No, it hasn't. Um, at least with the equipment, it hasn't yet, so.
So are you planning to, to put the order in for this one, and then get it, it'll be a year old already when you get it? Is that how, or?
Well, usually, we, and that, that's something I've worked with Sharon on in past purchases. Um, we, I don't order anything until it's approved, obviously, until the new budget's approved, but the people that we have working relationships with will honor, hey, you know, come January 1st, I have a new van coming, not August, so, or later on. And that's something we'll have to see what happens.
Any other questions?
Moving on, um, page 35, just to let you know, there's no planning requests this year, and there's no conservation requests this year, just for everyone. Um, the two engineering ones I want to, or the three that I want to talk about, 35, that is the Rich Dorf Drive Culver Pipe Replacement. If anyone is familiar where that is, it's near Little Meskego Lake. It is set right next to two homes. Um, this one is going to be a challenge to replace. It is rotting out. Um, it needs to be replaced this coming year. We're probably, will do it in the fall of 2022, uh, once it gets down, um, and we kind of, we always lower the lake. It'd probably be the best time for us to do it, so.
The pipe that takes pretty much all the water from?
Piggly wiggly all the way down.
Yeah.
It's also 285 linear feet long. It is a squash pipe in col, uh, concrete, 48 by 76 inches. It's a big pipe. So the 175 is just for the 285 feet? It's not for the other two on there? It's for the, those are also just the flared end walls with the grate. So that's all included with the price and construction. Price of pipe and construction and removal. Is this ripping up the road at all, too? No, it is between two homes and grass, but the, the more concern is how close it is to the homes. We're trying to make sure that we don't have to put sheet piling in, or somehow we're going to, we're, we're working with a contractor of, of once we replace it, put the next one, because of how close it is to basement walls.
It's closer than you and I are right now.
So what is it, easement, or we own the land? We have an easement.
Any other questions? Let's try squeezing another one in before we start Big Lake.
Sure. Um, I'd like to actually squeeze in two of them real quick. Page 36, 37. So 36, again, there's nothing this year, but everyone keeps asking how we want to solve road program and what we want to do. So here's my solution, working with Ryan. Every three years, we'd like to do, get an extra million dollars to help with the road program. So again, not in for next year. It is kind of like letting you guys to absorb it, one in 2023 and one in 2026. So everyone has concerns with the road program. This is kind of like our way of thought process to present to you, have you think about it, and let us know your thoughts, so. Is this like for extra road, or you're talking not a major project? Extra, extra road program. Instead of doing re, road reconstruction, we get about, we do about $750,000 a year in our road program. Every three years, we're asking for another million dollars to bid it out altogether.
So we can get caught up with?
No, I, I think that's a good idea. I mean, it's a lot of money, but we do have a lot of problems with our roads, uh, and they're not getting better. The only, the only suggestion, I guess I would say, is if you watch that and you find in 2024, we can budget some of that money. We can break it up, and then we can move it over, kind of play the cat and mouse, depending on how we.
500 per year for two years?
Well, I'm not saying to do that, but just they can keep their eyes on it, and they can look at budgeting purposes and see where we're at and things like that, that if we can budget money, we might want to look at that instead of getting a big hit at one shot. Just a suggestion. I have no problem with putting money into roads, because I think, uh, a lot of people would be happy to see their roads fixed.
Why not just do three, three, and three? I mean.
Well, he's trying to group things together, probably for, while the machines are here, you get a better price, I would think. I'm trying to do larger amounts, like if it's, like, for example. I'm trying to do larger amounts, like if it's like for example, it'd be a one point seven five million dollar contract going out there. You know, because we combined it with the seven hundred fifty. So I'm trying to give a lot more people to bid on it, a lot lower prices for the larger amounts. So kind of like entices contractors.
Looking how Goodenfield came in with that big project, you know, something like that.
True.
So and the and the last one, just quickly is thirty seven is our LED light program. This one would be the last one. This year Pioneer got done, Test Corners, I believe, is done, and the last one is Moreland area, right? Moreland's getting done right now. So pretty much we have almost all our major lights that we own are switched to LED. This last one is little ones that we have remaining at various intersections throughout the city, parks, um, but that's it. And then pretty much everything's.
How have those shed snow and ice? Pretty well? How have those shed snow and ice?
And I think that's okay with those because they're pointed down. I understand what you're seeing, like the traffic signals because they're kind of protected. They don't shed the snow or ice real good. So if you have the signals that are LEDs, they don't burn them off. Um, I I've seen that concern with a lot of like, uh, Wisconsin DOT people, like the red, green and they yell, they won't burn through those anymore. So but most of these lights, they we have to focus shooting them down, at least in industrial park. Well, nothing's going to hang on them. So.
Did we do the library as well?
These are like these little like fifty things left that we have. Um, these are like little poles that are out there that's remaining that we'll, we're going to try to hit. And that's everything from engineering is like I said, nothing in planning, nothing in conservation. So this is a good break for us.
All right. Thank you. All right, I'm going to adjourn the committee of the whole. Oh, do we? Yeah. Can I get consensus on those items? Any?
Sure.
Do we have consensus on those engineering items? Alderman?
Yes. Sorry, they're side conversation.
Alderman, well, do we have consensus on those items that he just went over?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Zero eight? Yeah, wow. Yeah, you got your miles down on that.
Thirty years.
All right, I'm going to adjourn the committee of the whole and, all right, continuing on with the committee of the whole at six twenty four PM. You have the floor.
All right, um, we're now moving to DPW. We'll start on page thirty eight. Just one side note going through on page forty two, the amount is correct, the name is wrong, it should be wood chipper. If you look at the, um, in the title for the introduction, everything else is correct. It's just wrong on page forty two. Just to let you know, the conveyor belt was already purchased. At least my copy says wood chipper or says conveyor belt, but it should be wood chipper. Before we get into what's for next year, just one note of higher cost on page forty four. In twenty twenty three, our large excavator is due and that's three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I always try to like, let you know, one big one that's coming up. So starting on page thirty eight, um, that is just our miscellaneous small equipment. Each year, um, we just do five thousand dollars. That has not changed. Any questions before moving on to the next one? Moving on to the next one, it's on page thirty nine. This is our trucks. Uh, again, this is a twenty twenty two. We're looking to do our three quarter ton pickup. This is the one that earlier that Ryan, and get me if I'm wrong, that this might one be delayed as well. Correct?
Questions, comments? Probably the same ones we had earlier. Continue.
Moving on, page forty, it's our front end loader, uh, very large piece of equipment, two hundred and ten thousand. Um, can you tell us how old that is?
The one we would be replacing is fifteen years old. Higher hours, um, kind of similar with George's van, except for our parts are a lot bigger and more expensive. So we're starting to get into the, uh, not the rebuild area, but the hundreds are turning into the thousands lately. So we usually try and get twelve to fifteen years out of them. Um, it's been great. It's just got high hours and we can still get top dollar for it as trade in. So now it's kind of the time to where we can make that transition. And it is a everyday use piece of equipment year round also. So it'll be another ten to fifteen year purchase.
So that's our net after sale?
Uh, no. No, this is what they'll trade in.
We never put salvage valves because we don't know what it is. This is just our cost for it, just to let you know. So. But we do trade in all our vehicles. We sell them online. Everyone, just to let you know, we don't just.
Does that offset the costs here when we do kind of budget item stuff like, or does that end up in a fund somewhere?
Sharon, you want to address that?
A slush fund. I'm just kidding.
Wait, microphone so people, that huge audience on YouTube watching can hear you.
That is classified as a revenue, so the expenditures have to be reported as expenditures and then any kind of trade in would go under a fixed asset sale. It will still be reflected in that fund, however, so the entire fund balance will be reduced by the revenue coming in. Or I should say increased.
Thank you. Any questions on the front end loader? Continuing.
Uh, on page forty one, uh, we are replacing our skid loader with bucket. Um, any can?
Again, everyday use, um, with how we have grown with our crew, as the city's grown, is a need to go out every time with this piece of equipment from ripping out curb to grading. It it goes out with everything. It goes out every day and we've, our current one is, to put in perspective, is five years old, four years old, and we already have four thousand hours on it. So.
Probably pointing out also the amount that Public Works does in-house now compared to what we used to do has gone up dramatically.
Correct. The people in place and certain skills aspects that they hold have been helping us quite a bit keeping more stuff in-house and that's why you're seeing our machines with higher hours.
Any questions?
What we're doing is every four or five years, are we making that money up by doing it in-house?
I would say yes.
I mean, because you got the cost of mentioning the machine, you got the man hours, you got the cost of rebuying it. I just.
Do you want to give some examples of stuff, type of work?
I mean, I'm just bringing it up. It's something that you can look into, but I.
For example, Park Arthur right now, um, digging out Park Arthur, we took on the expense of saving money to just digging out the actual field mix. That saved us about twenty five thousand dollars. Ripping out curb, grading work, if you bring in outside contractors, a skilled operator gets bill out at a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars an hour to where our guys can do it at their wage with what we do with the equipment. I mean, it is a everyday use going through there. It is always going to be everyday use. Um, they're very convenient. The more stuff we take care of, case in point, City Hall with all the vertical curb, we use that to plow. It, we're more efficient with them. Um, they could be easily trailered.
How many of these do we have? Just one?
I have one and utilities has one.
And they're the same size?
Yes.
Okay, and the last one we replaced was four, four or five years ago?
Uh, a little bit longer, a little bit longer than that. Actually, utilities got one just recently.
Yeah, we replaced that one last year for utilities. Yeah.
Utility. See, that's why you're wondering.
Yep, nope, nope. That was one that was split between sewer and water last year.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense then. Okay.
Is that one your backup then? If your regular one goes down, you're sharing between the departments, sir?
We have. They share really nice.
Two guys driving it. Yeah.
How many hours on this one, do you know?
Uh, we're just under four thousand, our current one. So.
Any other questions on this? Thanks. Continuing.
Moving on, page forty two. Like I said, this is our wood chipper. Um, again, the price is correct. It's eighty thousand. Uh, we've been chipping a lot of things because of the amount of Emerald Ash. Um, some of the history.
Yeah, so in the last five years with the Emerald Ash bar, um, to put in comparison, when that first came out, we were probably doing about a hundred, a hundred fifty roadside trees within our right of way. We don't take them unless they're going to fall or present a danger to the public. So we'll go out and we do preventive maintenance. Um, we're usually starting right after Christmas, all the way through April, we go out, we take and we mark right now and take all the trees down. Since this has increased, last year we took down four hundred forty three trees. So with that comes more wear and tear on the equipment. The hours have gone up. Um, our wood chipper, which is eight years old, um, has just under four thousand hours on it. So it keeps going up and up and up. And with that also goes a price, maintenance, blades, wear and tear. So, um, just looking out in the future, kind of seeing what's out there right now, I don't see that going away anytime soon.
Ryan, is that kind of the working life for thousand hours?
On certain pieces of equipment, you start to see wood chipper's, um, I mean, you're you're sticking up to fifteen inch in diameter trees with this one in there. On equipment, you start to see hydraulic pumps, hoses, um, resetting all the pins. It it just, it starts to get expensive and it all depends on the operator. We have great mechanics. Sometimes you'll see a a machine with fifteen to two thousand hours on it or two thousand hours on it and it'll look like a machine with six thousand hours on it. We're we're very fortunate that we have great equipment, good mechanics, and it comes home every night and it's covered. So.
And we just have one of these as well of this size.
Correct. We have a, um, we call it our backup, but we acquired it when we had, uh, took over parks. And that is probably over twenty years old. It has about nine hundred hours on it and that is, if ours goes down, it's enough to get us by, but definitely not enough to be efficient and get the job done.
One of the reasons I ask is that, because this is because of the size, do we need a smaller one? Should we be doing different sizes and different?
The the size for this, um, allows us to still get the job done efficiently and then still bring our, the wood back that we supply, that we dump in the north parking lot. There's people waiting at noon every day knowing we're coming back for lunch and at three o'clock knowing we're coming back to end the day.
Put a sign up on the street.
They know. And as soon as we dump, they take it out of there. So it's kind of a happy medium. When you get into the bigger ones, um, it requires a bigger truck to pull because of the just sheer weight and we have to back into certain easements and smaller yards. And when the ground is frozen, it's kind of hard. It kind of pushes the truck a little more. Um, anything smaller, we would tear it up too much. It wouldn't be adequate for what we do. So it's kind of like the sweet spot for what we do. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And the last one for twenty twenty two is the tar kettle. Um, this is replacing our turn, current tar kettle, which is thirty years. So.
What wears out in these?
Um, it just turns into a safety thing with the tar kettles. It right now you, um, I don't even know what I want to say this. It's just not safe.
Okay.
Be on record saying that we we use it. What we do is we go through, um, as soon during leaf pickup and this is what we tar over manholes with so plows don't hit them. We take care of any major crack filling that, um, needs to be addressed before winter happens. It is used every year. Um, this is a, I don't even want to call it a twenty year purchase. I mean, we'll have it for quite a while. It's just, it needs to be up to snuff as far as lighting it and keeping it maintained.
All right. Any questions? Thank you.
So just for everyone's knowledge, anything from forty four all the way to page forty nine, that's kind of our planning for the next five years for equipment. Like I said, the big one is next year is our very large excavator. You can see it driving down the road once in a while. That's three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And in comparison, um, that right now currently is just under seven thousand hours on it. And that was purchased, I think that was a two thousand and fourteen, if I'm not mistaken, fifty. So that is used probably the most of everything.
Last year I asked the question about us, um, staging, uh, the best you can to agree with the the timing for your purchases. I presume you're being very aware of this yet.
Yeah. Yeah. With our conveyor, the bucket truck, um, we kind of, we're pushing out as far as we can without sitting there with nothing to use.
Yeah, I like the idea that you're trying to keep the budgeting from year to year from being yo-yo.
Any other questions about DPW?
Do we have consensus?
Hmm.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to start moving to our water, then we're going to go to our sanitary sewer department. So. That's it.
Pages fifty to fifty four?
Yep. Again, just when we do the water in the sewer, when we remember we split the trucks, just if you do see repeat, it's just remember for anyone who's new, we just kind of split the trucks over the next kind of things when we do trucks and some of the other equipment. So the first one in twenty twenty two, we're looking for a pickup truck. It's forty six thousand hours. We're splitting it between sewer and water. Also on that page, just there's twenty twenty three, we have no truck there. Why that is, is once you see in sewer, we're going to request a VAC truck and because we're going to request a VAC truck, it was a good idea not to request a truck for that year in twenty twenty three. It is not a mistake. So.
Questions? Continuing.
Moving on to the next one. So page fifty one, and this is a new one. So SCADA security. So our SCADA system, we use our SCADA system to run all our lift stations and we also use it to use to run our water towers.
Can you explain what SCADA is for those watching?
Supervisory control and data acquisition.
Thank you.
Basically monitors all our alarms from the sewer system and it controls the wells and turns the tower water, the wells on and off to fill the towers.
It's our whole control system.
Plus, besides that, remember we have very large lift stations and that helps run those as well. Some of them, it could cause some real backup and trouble. Well, cybersecurity has been very kind of a hot issue. So what we have determined what we do is we create a entirely backup system and then we just flip a switch so that no one can ever get into it.
Questions?
Again, this cost will be split between, um, the sewer. So you'll see a bill for twelve thousand five hundred. Again, this is our water meters, uh, page fifty two. Um, this is projected out. Um, this is us replacing water meters and adding water meters as we get more and more development coming. Any updates or?
Yeah, we started out at a hundred thousand a a year on this for years. We went to a hundred and fifty a year or two ago. Now we're, we're into a spot where we have to replace so many meters, two hundred thousand in meters for replacement and and new is just where we're at. Every twenty years, we have to replace the meters.
So how many more meters are you replacing per year?
What's the break rate between new and replacement?
Uh, we're probably at three quarters replacement.
This year and compared to last year, off the top of your head, and the year before, I mean, it was like half of that?
We probably did two fifty, but every year everyone gets older.
It's bumping up there.
Plus, you remember, as we have more development and you have more development coming on, um, you have Will Rose Phase Two, Cobblestone, Glen and Mesquite Lakes. As more development comes, Mallory Ridge, you're going to have, we have, we need to put meters in every one. So just to let you know, it's replacement plus development. You just had a public hearing about Curly Crossing. That's a hundred and eight planned. These are things that are coming down the way. Just so.
So when they put them in, like in the new development, they pay for the meters or we put them in?
Pay WCA.
No, you, you, the utility owns the meters and pays for them. It gets paid back eventually through the rates.
But they also pay a WCA connection fee, which covers
Yeah.
the infrastructure cost.
Like the hookup and stuff. Yeah. Okay. I didn't know if we, if we, if we sold the meters and then or or.
No, we have to own them. That's Public Service Commission regulations is we have to own and maintain the meters.
Any further questions about meters? Moving on, page fifty three, this is our well rehabs. Uh, we're down to two. We're on well two in twenty twenty two and wealth nine in twenty twenty three. Um, and that would be it. Right? So we have nothing.
Near future.
Yep.
Questions?
And our last one here is page fifty four. That is. That is a well abandonment, number twelve. Do you know where that one is?
It's in Lakewood Metals. It was a community water system well. When we took over the system, it's got really high total dissolved solids and iron in it. It's kind of ugly water. We've been saving it as a backup well, but I think we have plenty of capacity. It's time just to get rid of it and get rid of maintenance and the testing we have to do on it.
So it costs fifty thousand dollars to get rid of a well?
To abandon it properly, yeah. The pump has to be pulled out of it, has to be filled.
Any other questions?
So just for the next ones, for fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, all the way to fifty-eight, those are, and fifty-nine, those are our future water things. Please remember, fifty-five, remember when we had our water discussion and we were talking about the cost of relaying those water mains and those three subdivisions? There's your cost and that was done probably two years ago. So you can only assume that is higher as we keep moving it further and further, just to kind of give you guys perspective.
Scott, as long as I have you here.
Yep.
Page fifty, actually, Scott, the other Scott, but you can both jump in on this. On page fifty-eight, Weatherwood Court subdivision, the relaying of the water laterals, we've got it for 2025. We've both been receiving some emails regarding the quality of that one. Is that one in worse shape than any of the other ones? Is this something we could consider moving to 2023? What are your thoughts?
You, you, you could. We haven't, it started out, it, it's a relatively new subdivision as subdivisions go. For some reason, the copper laterals between the main and the curb stop are developing holes in them. We started out repairing them, the first probably handful, and since then, we've just gone and replaced them as they, as they break. And we haven't had one since March of last year. So I'm hoping we're over the, over that hump right now. I know the people are frustrated there when we, when they develop a leak, it takes about a week or sometimes two weeks for it to find its way to the surface before we can really locate it and there's some pumps running. So they're frustrated. They want us to come in and do them all right now. I, I don't think that's the best. Trying to coordinate it with the road programs, we can go in, replace the laterals, repave the road at the same time.
So with that, other Scott, 2023 would be our first window for doing that.
Correct. So again, remember we talked about L-RIP funds and it's curb and gutter down there? So that's why it's an odd year. If we move it to 2023, we're going to do the road program in there right away because we're going to have lines all in the road. We're going to mill it down, just get a nice, once we, once he repairs it, I'm coming in and we're just going to make sure it's all covered up so there's not saw cuts in all the new pavement. So just to let everyone know, why have to do an odd years, 2021, we just got the L-RIP funds, doesn't happen again until 2023. So the earliest we can move it up is till 2023 if you want to take advantage of the L-RIP funds.
Is there anything more pressing between 2023 and 2025 that we would be pushing off if we moved this one up? What are your thoughts on that?
I don't think so from our standpoint.
From a five-year planning standpoint, does anyone have objection if we at least look at moving this to 2023 to take care of the issues and that?
Does that mean you can move the road program up too?
I would just not remove the road program. I would, this road would definitely be done in 2023. If he comes in there and replaces those, those laterals, I'm, I'm doing the road.
So how would that?
We, we just, that would jump ahead.
That would just be one of the roads we would do in that, that year's road program. Instead of being done two years later, it'd probably swap with another section.
We had a five-year plan, I think we talked about it last fall or a couple of falls ago. This road would jump ahead of the, of other people. And the reason why is if I can cover it with a minimal cost of just doing two-inch milling relay, I'm going to do it instead of expose it and make it a full reconstruction. So it, it would happen. That's, that's, that's my game plan.
It's your district, so I guess, I mean.
Yeah, I'm fine with, as long as it's not going to throw anything out of.
Right. And that's what, that was my question is I don't want to put something that's more pressing.
What would be the normal for that road if the, if the water main wasn't fair, the services weren't failing? That road wouldn't be up for another twenty years?
It, it wouldn't be up for a long time, just to let you know.
Okay.
But we would, once he cuts all those lines in there, that road's just got jumped up to get done, so.
And it's not like we can wait twenty years to replace the mains on it, that we know we can't do.
Okay.
But what else would you have to push off to accomplish that?
From my standpoint is I just find out whatever I price out that cul-de-sac is, that amount, let's say it's four hundred thousand dollars. If there's another four hundred thousand dollar subdivision that's up, that's going to be pushed off for a year. I'm just giving you the honest facts of.
Well, that's what we're, that's what I would ask you.
Now that, where that is unknown.
Yeah, we don't know what that is.
All our, all our roads are graded right now.
Yep.
Right. And so the ones with the, the worst grades come ahead and this would move ahead of that, but mainly because of the, the water main would.
Now, again, I did ask for 2023, the extra million dollars. Just throwing that out there, that's, I'm making that point, so.
But you did it for every two, every other year, so it would fall in the same year again, 2025?
No, I did it for every three years, 2023 to 2026, so.
But you had a reason for putting it in 2025 versus 2023 is the only thing that I would ask.
The real reason from our standpoint is nothing has happened in a year and the fact is the road doesn't need to be done. So for a pressing issue, i- it's not an emergency, real pressing for me to do. And in the last year, we even had a break. So that's, that's the reason why.
And it's going in a five-year plan, so it's not like if nothing happens between, if, if nothing happens between now and 2023, well, maybe we can reevaluate it in 2023 and say, listen, we might be past that hump at this point. I just want to kind of have it on the radar that if things are progressing like they have been the previous few years, that we don't go to the people and say, yeah, I know you got this leak or we have to start replacing them one by one and we end up tearing up the whole road anyway and we haven't budgeted for it, so.
Well, can we leave it where it's at and if the problem arises, address it in the next budget cycle instead of moving it up?
You could. I know we haven't had anything in a year, but looking at the number that, I mean, you guys are the experts, you think we're okay like that or you think we're just on borrowed time right now?
They're all going to fail eventually.
Yeah.
Sure.
And if they, and if they fail as, if they fail unscheduledly, we're going and replacing them unscheduledly and unbudgeted without a budget for it because we have to do it. That's, that's my main thought is just let's stop doing these fixes on, with, without having plans for them.
Are you talking about some kind of contingency then for that kind of problem?
When we do that?
If you're facing it fairly often?
They review it every year, you guys review your budget every year anyway. So it's not, it's not a major deal.
What you're going to do is when you, when you revisit how you're going to replace these water mains that we talked about in other subdivisions, this is really the same thing, just a service instead of main. You're going to have to decide whether utilities going to pay for them or you're going to assess them. That's the first question. And then you go from there.
It just brings that conversation sooner. Doesn't have to be something, I mean, we're not approving it today, we're just approving planning for it today.
So this is the lines that are running to the house?
Yes.
So this, the utility owns those lines?
The utility owns from, from the main to the edge of road right away, where the curb stop is.
Oh, but, and that's where it's failing, it's not failing from, to the house.
Right under the curb line.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, I was thinking it was the one to the house.
And it's, it's copper and what we do all PVC now. Yep.
Oh, we do PVC now?
Yep.
From the curb stop, that house is all moly. From the corporation stop, the curb stop is copper. And that was our standard for years. And we're finding that our soil, not just in this subdivision, but throughout the city is.
Corrosive.
Copper. More so down there. I don't know if it's the copper that was made that time, in, in those years or what, but there's more of that subdivision than any other.
All right. Any other questions on that part?
So we're, we're moving it up, is that, does consensus?
Is that the consensus to move it up and for the planning standpoint? Seeing some reluctance on that side.
I mean, it sounds like this, this is a universal problem. It's going to be a problem with other subdivisions as well.
Oh, we haven't headed.
We have some, but they're infrequent in other subdivisions. More frequent in this subdivision than others.
Okay.
There's something about the soil there that's just really impressive. I, you can revisit it next year if you want to push it out two years next year, you can do it. I mean, it's two years out right now.
Yeah, it's not until 2023.
Revisit it again next year and see what happens between this year and next year. It's not a good one. I, I also haven't done that whole subdivision yet. We're down five, maybe a ramp and moly from four to five, so there's very little left that has to be done in that subdivision. Well, the first ones we did were just patches, so. I know the first were patches, but we're down literally five or six homes.
So you want to replace the patches?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because they're going to fail again.
Yeah, we replace everything, so. That's, that, that, this price accounts for all this.
You got five houses and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I went in on that deal.
Yeah.
Again, there's lateral asphalt bedding.
Fixing the bedding.
But it was five houses, huh?
So what's the consensus? Really all the changing this does is allow us, Alderman Madden to be able to tell constituents that it's been moved up two years right now, that could change, or we could, or she goes back and says, next year we'll discuss moving it up. That's really the difference. It's all on paper right now. It's really responding to a constituency.
Anybody else want to say something?
Doesn't matter one way or the other, it's not getting it done this year either way.
Yeah. It's up to you, Kevin, make the call.
Got a coin? Yeah.
Either way, it can change next year.
Right, absolutely.
But this is the government, once you put it down, it never changes.
That's right. Unfortunately, we move things up.
I don't know.
Well, that's funny, as long as we're not sacrificing another issue for this.
Something will get changed because we, you know, it's not like we're going to add another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in there on 2025, so some hundred and twenty-five thousand is going to be taken from somewhere else.
Right, but what I'm suggesting is that if, if we're going to push another project off, just so that project doesn't suffer or that.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're not pushing off something that's more important is my, that was my question.
And it won't affect the water utilities program at all, it's all in the road.
Road program, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that hundred and twenty-five thousand for the water utility is just, it's a separate, it'll either be spent or not spent. It's not, we're taking any from any other project.
Okay.
It, it's affecting road program.
It's the, yeah.
But it, it only makes common sense if he does that work, we do our work right away.
There's five homes left out of a, how big a subdivision?
It's not.
Well, it's not, it's not just five.
Whole subdivision, okay. That's fine, that's, that's fine, yeah. Let's move on.
All right. Thank you.
Um, any other water?
We, we have consensus on all the water projects so far. All right, sewer?
Starting on page sixty, I'll wait for people to get there. So again, this is again splitting the trucks that we do 2022, we're just again splitting the twenty-three thousand. However, the jet vac truck, every fifteen years and that one in 2023, that is half a million dollars. How old is our one now?
How is an Alderman?
Two thousand and eight. So our one that we have now is two thousand and eight.
Fifty grand a year. That's surely, that's.
How come this one lasted so much longer?
The last one lasted eighteen years.
Okay.
Last one was ninety-five.
Okay, so you didn't buy it when, for some reason I thought you bought it when you bought the sewer sculpting stuff.
Yeah, the camera stuff, that, that one lasted, because you're lazy.
Okay.
So the VAC truck is working fine now?
Yes, but like we're riding.
Yeah, I understand, I just, just asking.
Hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars for repairs.
Yo, duct tape goes a long way.
Is it a Dyson truck?
How often do you use this?
It's out, I want to say year round, but it, water doesn't do well in the, in the winter, so I mean, emergencies, it goes out in the winter, otherwise it's spring through fall, it's out, out on the road.
This is like our first go-to piece of equipment when you have sewer backup than everything else. To try to get people, like get their, you know, stuff out of the race.
Yeah, it was, a month or two of it was laid up for almost a month due to the trash issue, so.
Any other questions?
Moving on, page sixty-one, again, this is the half for the SCADA maintenance for cybersecurity from that one. Sixty-two, it's our lift station upgrades and 2022, it's our SOBEC lift station renovation. Can you explain a little bit what we're going to do there?
Yeah, we're removing the controls out of the pit. Some of these stations have, the controls are down underground, trying to move them one by one above ground so we don't have to do confined space entry just to get at the controls. That's what SOBEX will be and then after that, it's variable frequency drives at McShane following year, the odor scrubber down in McShane and, and such. I think SOBEX is one of the last ones that has to have the controls brought above grade. We've got one left by Little Mesquite Lake yet.
So we're putting panels up, are they enclosed in houses?
Yeah, they're, they're in.
Okay.
These will be in stainless steel panels.
Oh, but they'll be exposed stainless steel panels, you can see them. So that, that meets the cyber attack, the NERC requirements or whatever, does that make, will that make that or is that changing?
This one's in a fenced-in area. There's a fence around the whole lift station, so we're just bringing it from below grade to above grade.
The only reason I ask is because you're going into the SCADA stuff and I know that there's all kinds of new NERC requirements with that, so that's going to be coming, so I don't know if you looked into that at all, if there's going to be extra expenses down the road or should we be doing that all at once?
Eventually, there'll probably be cameras at each of these sites and Barb's working on getting those cameras set up at our wells first. Eventually, all of our infrastructure will probably have cameras in every one.
Yeah, because you got to make sure the requirements are so somebody can't get in there and turn them off or attack it so it doesn't work, however you want to say it, so.
And that's what the SCADA security is going to be, they're just going to keep them out of there. This, this is.
So you'll have a backup on this one as well, that's what SCADA is going to do?
That, the backup isn't for our control system that monitors all of these stations. These stations have individual controls inside themselves. Somebody would physically have to break into the gate, break into the control panel to get in and shut it off.
Sure. No, I was just asking because I know that there's all kinds of things coming down the road on, on the security side, so I don't know if that's something when you move them, we should be looking at doing now. That's just a question.
I think we're okay.
Okay.
And this, this sounds a safety issue too.
I was going to say that that's, the confined space is huge.
Yeah, that's the other thing too. It removes it from confined space, confined space.
I understand moving out of a wet crappy environment, right?
Well, plus you have less, you can, when you go confined space, you have to have more men reporting.
Right, you have to have a minimum of two, depending on the confined space, a minimum of two. In a storm, you can't get into the controls. Usually, we get somebody running around in some of these stations, if there's an issue, you want to get into control panel by yourself and you're always looking for two people, so. It's just kind of sense, it just makes sense to put them above grade. At one time, it was right to put them below grade, now it's right to keep them under, you know, excessive.
Any further questions?
And this meets our MMSD requirements.
Page sixty-three, again, this is our MSD INI stuff. Again, this is the stuff that we pay to MSD, they put aside. We have a work plan that's at MSD right now that they're reviewing and once that work And once that work plan kind of gets approved, we'll probably be coming back to you. Similar to MSD green infrastructure funds. This is the MSD, um, private property INI.
So can you explain that private property portion of public funds?
This is an MMSE program. They take some of the money that we spend, we give them every year in our, in our rates. They put it in as a designated account and it has to be spent on private property to keep inflow and infiltration out of the sewer system.
And how, how, which kind of private property are we targeting here?
Laterals is what we're targeting here from the road right away to the house. There are a number of different things you can do with this. They, they have their hand. MMSE has their hand in just about everything you do. You have to get approval for doing whatever you want to do in this. And it's, it's really hard to find.
Useful projects.
Useful projects that you're not just.
A newer community like this.
Throwing the money away.
Right. So I mean, for those watching, what's it, when you have a cracked lateral between the sewer lateral, between the house and the road and it rains, the rain goes.
If it's sewer.
Overloads our system when with rainwater, when it, rainwater should be completely separate.
Correct. And if you see MSD just dumped again, um, because they had too much system, they have combined sewer.
Partially treated.
Yep. So we, as a community, our, our stuff is very new. So we don't have a lot of cases of where we can do this. So one of the plans that with our work plan that we're doing is we would fully replace the lateral from the home all the way to the curb stop for the homeowner. We had to, in order to do this and look at this work plan, Scott and his crews, they started doing the cameras. They started looking at various different locations where we felt that the system was very old. Our laterals were very old and we had to show, hey, you have leakage coming in on a very dry day. Now, one of their policies is relining it and relining has not been, um, so successful. They found issues. Our plan is full replacement. The other thing that we have found with a lot of communities is they would like the community and the resident to pay a portion of it. And as you can tell, most people, when you flush your toilet, they don't care, nor do they, as long as it's working. So to get a resident to buy in, it's kind of hard. And it would be kind of tough for us if we had a street and let's say there's 10 people on there and only three people want to participate in it. So what we have decided with our plan and work plan is we would do the full replacement, rip it out. We know it's brand new, not reline it, brand new. We cover all the restoration and the homeowner pays for nothing. Because if we try to get the homeowner to pay for something, it has not worked. And we have found this in a lot of communities. Is that correct?
So this is, um, a line that we own or MSM?
This is what lines, these are laterals that actually the private residents owns. And this is only to do for the private property INI. This is what it's set up for private property INI. It's kind of like you said, you're probably trying to wrap your head around this a little bit as well, but it's for private.
I mean, it makes sense that the, uh, if, if they own the lines, that they would pay something. Because if it breaks, they're going to have to pay for all of it.
The, the issue is if it's just a little leak and it's working.
As, as long as they flush and it goes away.
They don't care.
They're happy.
They don't care that we get rainwater every time it rains in the system.
Is this the same line that can?
Same line that can back up into their house as well?
Yeah.
Yep.
But again.
The problem is, is where the leaks are, when that water gets to the bottom end at a lift station, the people near the lift station are going to get backed up, not the people who have the leaks in their lateral.
Yep. It, it's a real tough, uh, I'm going on four and a half years here, trying to find a program to spend this money in this community where it's very new. It's.
It's not like Westalls or Shorewood where you have play pipes and all that other stuff.
It's a struggle for us.
I know you mentioned it's, it's hard to find a spot to spend the money last couple of years. So.
But we have to spend it. Just, um, we've been.
Or you lose it?
Yep.
MMSE keeps it.
Yep. And this has been, we've been.
Really our money. Cause it's, we've been paying the rates and portion of the rates are used for this.
We've been able to roll it over for the last couple of years, but they are trying to close this program off and restart the program. So their plan is to pretty much, they want all this off the paper book. So we are going to be doing something probably for this year, maybe to the end of this year or next year or the next two. We have to spend this money. We have no choice now.
Great. Any other questions? Continuing.
Uh, last one is page 64 is we have a Jensen lift station. We need to get a generator there. Um, it's.
It's an upgrade.
Yeah.
It's, it's titled wrong on this one. The Jensen lift station, uh, is downstream of that subdivision. So Kirkland Crossing. We're having evaluated right now to see if the pumps need to be upgraded. If the station's big enough to take it all. So this is planning for, assuming it's not, and it's going to have to be upgraded.
Okay.
It's that simple.
Questions?
That's all we have. 65, 66 was Parks Kelsey Area Drive. That's a stormwater, um, study that we keep pushing down the way. So that's all we have.
Do we have consensus on the sewer?
Yep.
All right. That covers your capital budget items. You have on here MMSE green infrastructure discussion and decision.
Correct.
You can describe this while I can help.
Well, Scott's getting whatever he's Scott's getting. Um, we've talked about this in the past. MMSE has a green infrastructure. This is where we've done different soils and all this green infrastructure stuff around.
And again, they take our rates, put it in a designated fund and tell us we have to spend it. Regulate how it's spent.
Very regulated.
And.
I mean, there's stuff that would make sense, like allowing us to buy properties, uh, around areas that have flooding. There's, we have homes in Muskego that should never have been built in certain areas.
Yep.
Um, that caused flooding everywhere else. That would be a quick fix. They don't allow us to do that. Um, we are the last, one of the last.
Last one.
Last contract community outside Milwaukee County.
We are the last community still in this program. We are making a recommendation to get out.
So what I gave you is from the September 2020 budget, the new numbers. I talked to Bill Milkie from R and M. He hasn't gotten the new numbers for it. But if you look on page two, uh, or three, I'm sorry, that's page three of it. So we get water course credits. These are all the communities that are outside of Milwaukee County. Everyone gets a water course credit. We do the two. They also get a GI credit. We did not get a GI credit. We didn't opt out. So that's us trying to do lake access. That's trying to do different things. Our GI credit would have been $421,000 last year, um, for a total of 1.124 to $1.5. So GI, it's only increasing. Um, MSD is relying on green infrastructure more and more. So if we opt out of it, we get a credit for it. But once you opt out, we can't get back in, just to let you know. But there's no rules tied to this. For example, we can't do anything down in Dunoon area because you're not MSD. If we get this, we can do it wherever. There's no rules tying us saying that we have to be in part of MSD. Um, we can look at different things. We can purchase houses. We cannot purchase a house for it that's in a bad area. We are very limited. I have to work work plans. I have to get other things. Basically, um, it's also from my understanding with Bill Milkie, um, MSD takes a little cut as well. Uh, again, to process all this stuff, but we would have full control of our money is the best way to put it. And as I, you can ask any other community, there's reasons why they all opted out of it. We are the last ones. So.
Any objection or questions?
So what are we opting out of? I'm a little confused on.
MMSE GI credit. So we give money to MSD. They put it aside. And they say for green infrastructure, do things like soil amendments in your park. Create a bio swell, not a pond. So for example, with MSD green infrastructure, I can't create a stormwater pond because that's not green infrastructure. But ponds work really well. If we're not in the program, I can use the funds to create a stormwater pond.
So when we pay our MMSE rates, say for simplicity's sake, let's say it's a hundred dollars. They take tw- say for, out of example, 25 of it and they stick it in this segregated fund that they then tell us, we have this money that you can spend on, and they.
Limited things.
Limited to a very thin scope of things that that money can be spent on. One of those funds is the green infrastructure program. So they'll take that $25 and say, you have $25 to spend, but you can only spend it on here. Now we have the option of opting out and then just paying $25 less and using that credit. Well, they give you a credit back, use it in that credit for other projects.
Got it. So we do have it, but we have to put it into things that we're not doing right now.
Yes.
We are. We're putting in $50,000 with the stormwater trees and a lake access point, fixing it up. I have $450,000. I'd love to purchase a couple of homes that like have three some pumps in it, maybe create something. We can't use it for acquisition. So somehow we would have to raise the funds anyways to do it. And then we can use that for green infrastructure. I can put a bio swell in, but I can't put a pond in because a pond's not green infrastructure. You, you see, our hands are tied for green infrastructure. Green infrastructure has a place. It just doesn't have a place in a community like Muskego, Brookfield, Butler, Elm Grove, where we're kind of newer communities.
We're too new.
I mean, what's the incentive to stay in it then for? Yeah. What's the downside to, is there a downside to opting out? It almost doesn't sound like it.
Not anymore.
No. Was it originally when they did this? Like, did they give you more to use it on green?
Any option to opt out in recent?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. This is new. This is new. I think, let's look at the other program, MSD PPI and I. If they would give the option to out, to opt out of it, I would probably say we'd be the first one in line to do it, but they have not gone that way yet.
So the regulation has changed and previously you could buy property years ago with it.
The last one that we could buy Bay Lane, when we did Bay Lane Road and we put that bio, kind of like that water pond right at the end for the, when we did it, that was the last year we could purch- so we were able to use these funds to purchase that property to put that pond in, or it's kind of like a pond bio swell in there. But I can't do that anymore. I can't use funds. Acquisition's huge. I mean, in, in a lot of cases, what you need is it's not solving the stormwater. You need a place where you can store the stormwater. Well, if I can't purchase it with these funds, it's, it makes it very difficult.
Didn't we purchase the, the place next to the jewelry? Uh, center along the little creek way there too as well?
Yeah.
It was years ago.
Yeah.
That, that ended, again, the last year I could do it was when it was Bay Lane Place and then they stopped it. So.
So these monies will continue to be available to, to us.
Well, it comes in the form of a credit.
A credit.
What it'll be is actually a credit to the sewer utility. So our bill to MMSE will be smaller. You'll have to decide whether you want to leave that money in the sewer utility or designate some of it into a stormwater pond somewhere.
Okay.
Yep.
So we might create a whole new category? Is that what you're thinking or?
Y- yes. It could be. Yes. That, that's probably the best way of doing it is creating some sort of fund that we're transferring. Designated fund for.
And it's only, again, like I said, and if you talk to anyone, MSD is gone, green infrastructure, that's their main goal. I only can see that this credit is going to get larger and larger and larger because they're not building any more deep tunnels. Their theory is, is the more money that in budget we can s- put in the GI credit or GI plan, that's our goal. So that means our credit essentially should get bigger and bigger and bigger each year. It's all based off of budget.
We don't need to beat this up anymore. Is there any objection to it?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any communications, Miss Laney's business? Motion to adjourn the committee of the whole portion of tonight would be recommended.
A motion?
What about the other things on here?
We've covered everything on here.
IT and the PD?
That's, that, what do you mean in the capital budget? Those will come back next call.
Yep.
Oh, they're just here for.
Just going on the agenda. We had.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I already motioned that we adjourn.
Not yet. John second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Committee holds, adjourned at 7:14.